Committee will come to order. The Chair wishes to welcome everybody to one of the beautiful counties in this state. In fact, the most beautiful county in this state, Caldwell County, which of course is the home of the Chair. Chair also wants to recognize our folks from the General Assembly staff who are here today, our Sergeant at Arms David Leighton, Glenn Wall, Chris Moore. Want to thank our General Assembly Police Officers who are here with us today, including Sergeant Robert Barcoffer. Chair also wants to recognize the members of the General Assembly who were here tonight. They're all to the left of the Chair. Senator Warren Daniel, who is one of the Chairs. The Senate Redistricting Committee. Again, I'm Destin Hall. I chair the House Redistricting Committee. We have Senator Chuck Edwards, Senator Dean Proctor, Representative Jeffrey Elmore, Representative Ray Pickett, Representative Jay Adams, Representative John Torbett, Representative John Harvester, and Representative Becky Carney. Think I got everyone. Chair wants to thank everyone who is here tonight to come out to this first round of public comment for this cycle of redistricting. I think all of, as Chair can speak for all of the members here and all the members of the General Assembly in saying that we value your comments and we're excited to hear what members of the public have to say about the redistricting process in North Carolina. Chair's got a number of folks who have signed up, both online and in person here today. The Committee is going to libic comment of each person, up to two minutes per person, and the Sergeant at Arms will keep that time and will notify each speaker when they reach the two-minute mark. With that said, we will begin with Sue Smith, who is an online signee. Is Sue Smith in the audience? If not, we'll move on down the list. Dr. Sharon Brown. Is Dr. Sharon Brown here today? Dr. Sharon Brown. All right, we'll move on. Zachary Brockus. Zachary Brockus. Chair sees Senator Lowe coming in and wants to recognize him as well for being here, and we'll get you a chair. Bob Phillips. Mr. Phillips, good to see you. If you will, approach the microphone.
Representative Hall and Senator Daniel, it's great to be here in your home district. My name is Bob Phillips. I'm actually a Raleigh resident, but I'm representing Common Cause. We have several hundred members in this area. I actually have roots in Catawba County, so I sort of know this area. Let me first say thank you for what you all are doing in terms of giving the public an opportunity to speak to you about their views of redistricting, how it should be done. Representative Hall, as you've mentioned, you want to see the finest and best redistricting process possible, and to that end, as Common Cause, we will try to hold you accountable. And I have just a few suggestions I'd like to make. First and foremost, I would like to see, and I'm disappointed perhaps, that this is not a livestreamed event. We're standing here in Caldwell County, and Representative Hall, you probably know this, since early July, the COVID cases have climbed 4,000% since early July. Senator Daniel, Burke County has a positivity COVID rate of triple what it was in early July. I guess my point is, there's a lot of people who would probably like to participate from the comfort of their home. All of us have done virtual meetings since March of 2020. You all have certainly conducted the people's business that way. I would love to see you all try to livestream these and offer an opportunity for folks to participate again virtually. So that's one suggestion. The other is, in October, when you all start drawing the maps, it would be great if you could make it a little bit easier, better audio, more cameras. Again, if you're going to copy or mimic what you did in 2019, that would be great. Last thing, again, in the spirit of giving the public an opportunity to tell you what they think, after those draft maps come out, it would be great for you to have a series of public hearings. In fact, Representative Hall, right here in the finest county in the state would be a perfect place to have, and then the other sites that you have, just to give again an opportunity for folks to comment. Again, I want to thank you. I know this is not an easy task, and thank you for your public service, and I look forward to the process continuing.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Kim Moss.
My name is Reverend Kim Moss. I am here representing the Caldwell County NAACP. I am the President. On behalf of the Caldwell County NAACP, I would like to emphasize that in the past, North Carolina has recognized communities of interest as racially neutral redistricting criteria. Yet, communities of interest will be given little to no consideration in this year's redistricting criteria. I would also like to emphasize the importance of complying with the Voting Rights Act and other laws in the redistricting process, as well as the need for an open and transparent process that values community input. In particular, I would like to highlight the importance of considering the history of discrimination in voting and redistricting in North Carolina. Between 2010 and 2020, federal courts have found that North Carolina's redistricting plans have discriminated against black voters and voters of color by diluting minority votes. The General Assembly failed to include the consideration of the history of discrimination. I strongly oppose the exclusion of the history of discrimination and criteria, and urge the General Assembly to expressly consider the history of the discrimination. Finally, we ask that there be additional opportunities for public comment at all stages of the map drawing. We ask that for two weeks' notice to the public for all hearings, speakers should be able to sign up for virtual participation in hour prior to all hearings, as is allowed for in-person testimony. Thank you for the opportunity to provide this public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Moss. Jeffrey Ridge. Jeffrey Ridge. Phil Engel. Mr. Engel, if you will, approach the microphone.
Welcome to Caldwell County. I've come before you as the party chairman for Caldwell County Republican Party, and I'm here not so much to talk about the process, which I think is great, the transparency that we're seeing, and being able to hold a forum such as this to discuss the redistricting. But what I would ask for Caldwell County, and this is answered some of the rumors that we're hearing, leave Caldwell County alone. We like being a whole county. We like being ourselves in the 5th District. We're very happy where we are. We're very satisfied with our congressional delegation, and really don't see a need to change that. I equate it to sort of dating your wife and/or your husband, or your significant other. You get to know them real well, and you know their infractions and what they want to do, and then all of a sudden, poof, they're gone. And I really don't want to see that here. And on behalf of the 25,000 registered Republicans here in Caldwell County, I would ask you to leave Caldwell County as it is, not split it, but leave it whole and leave it in the 5th District. And I thank you, and thank you again for the transparency.
Thank you, sir. Smith Drake Jr. Smith Drake Jr. Prohaus Prohaus. Jamin Tom. Jeffrey Odom. Catherine Levy. Catherine Levy. Mary Moretz. Deborah McGivern.
I'm Deb McGivern, President of the League of Women Voters of Catawba Valley and a resident of Catawba County. We believe we speak for many voters that partisan politics should not play a role in the drawing of our voting maps. We ask for a transparent process that includes meaningful input from the public. We want voting maps that do not consider incumbents, addresses, or residents' voting histories, or party affiliations. We ask for political neutral criteria. Polling shows that the majority of North Carolinians support a nonpartisan approach to redistricting. We want voters to pick their representatives, not politicians picking their voters. Transparency and public input are critical in having a fair district. We apply to having public hearings in 13 areas. That is not enough. During this past year, I echo what Common Cause suggested. Virtual meetings are important. It is important for people to have their voices heard in a safe environment. We ask for public hearings not only before maps are drawn, but after those draft maps have been drawn. So I hope that that first round meant that there was a second round after those draft maps. This is an exciting time for North Carolina. Our growth has given us another U.S. representative. We ask our legislators to take that responsibility to heart. The North Carolina Constitution states all persons are created equal. We ask that all votes are created equal. Thank you.
Thank you. Perry Alletto. Perry Alletto. Rosanna McDonald.
My name is Rosanna McDonald. I am a Caldwell County resident for 20 years. I'm an RN. I'm a member of the NAACP and the League of Women Voters of Catawba Valley. I'm here to ask for a better and more transparent process in redistricting hearings to come. We need more public education about redistricting and the impact on all North Carolinians, especially communities of color, of interest, like Black and Latino communities. We need more public hearings to be scheduled. There have been slashes from '62 to '13 since 2011, and they exclude major counties. We need more timely and crucial details posted, like the exact addresses of the hearings. People were showing up at Caldwell Community College instead of coming here, because the original information was just Caldwell Community College. We need more safety information posted. This is the middle of a pandemic, and people want to know that they're safe coming to a meeting. There's no sanitizer outside. We need more video conferencing. I totally agree with the other speakers, so people can see this from their home. We need to have access to comments posted on the North Carolina General Assembly Redistricting website and access to comments at video conferencing. And we need more hearings scheduled after maps are drawn. Currently, there's only one scheduled in Raleigh, and that's really unacceptable. And in general, just when drawing the maps, race data really needs to be included, because race neutrality in map drawing is detrimental to communities of color. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Melissa Patton.
Thank you for coming to Caldwell County. All of you that are not local, welcome to our county. I'm representing my friends and family and myself tonight. We would like to thank the General Assembly for coming out to our community and other communities across the state to discuss this very complex issue, and for your efforts on openness and transparency for us as voters. We appreciate you doing this for us. We support the banning of racial and political data to help control against gerrymandering. Just want you to know that. We strongly support a whole-county provision to ensure fair and legal districts are drawn. We also would like to ask that our counties not be divided in congressional districts. Splitting counties is very confusing to voters, and in recent years, Caldwell County in particular has been in three different congressional districts. And so, we personally would like to see us stay in the 5th District, but we just would like for you to not split our county, both on the state level and on the federal level. Please keep us whole. We also support an open, fair, and constitutional process, and appreciate the General Assembly's efforts and this committee's efforts in that. Thank you.
Good evening. I want to take this opportunity to thank each of you for taking the time to come to our county and visit. I know it was a lot of traveling for quite a few of you. My name's Donnie Potter. I'm a Caldwell County Commissioner and a resident here for the last 21 years. You know, I guess my biggest concern, they kind of echoed some of this, but you know, it's important to me and important to us as a citizen and as county commissioner that we leave our county whole, that we do not split the county. I think it's an issue, you know, we understand that the census has changed, and we're close right there at that cusp, a little bit short. But I'm asking you to keep us whole, to keep Caldwell County together. It's very close. It just doesn't make sense to break us up. We've got a great working relationship with our House of Representatives and our other legislators across the state and the federal government. We communicate well. We know who to talk to when things happen in the county. I represent both parties in this county. I represent Republicans and Democrats. When I get a phone call, I don't ask them what party they're with. I try to help them, and I can tell you that I've had a lot of success with my legislators. They work hard, just like the rest of you do. I urge the committee tonight to keep Caldwell County whole and do not combine it with another county. Specifically, primary reason, in my opinion, is combining a Tier 1 county with potential Tier 3 county. That's problematic. My fear is that we were resorting, shifting resources and desperately needed, that are desperately needed here in Caldwell County to a Taga, who does not need it as bad as we do here in Caldwell. Caldwell County, like many other counties in the Western, has struggled for decades to get funding that is needed. Tier 1 counties have specifically been forgotten and underfunded through the years. And I fear that if, it would be worse if we combined a Tier 1 and Tier 3 county. That's problematic for all of us. Our education system is problematic for the whole system. For that reason tonight, I urge you to please keep Caldwell County whole. We trust that you will make the right decisions. These folks have made some great comments, but I appreciate the fact that you've come to this county, you've stood on this stage, you've listened to us. That takes a lot. Thank you so much for your time, and appreciate you being here, and welcome to Caldwell County.
Thank you, sir. Cindy Sellers.
Thank you so much for being here tonight and listening to our comments, and appreciate you coming. My name is Cindy Sellers, and I am the mother of two Afghanistan veterans, and that's the first thing I've got to say, because I'm so proud of them. And I was raised to be a very patriotic person. Proud that I am a retired teacher, and I am from Alexander County with some folks from Alexander County, and we are Democrats. Many of us are passionate and proud of our roots in North Carolina. We love our country. We have shared that with our students over many careers in our group, in classrooms in North Carolina. But currently, we cannot stand behind what we held high in our classrooms, in our careers. Everyone in North Carolina can vote. We told students that their votes do count. But even though this is a purple state, leaders have neutered the votes of rural North Carolina. When lines are drawn by politicians who brag that the reason the lines aren't more gerrymandered is the reason is because that's the best they could do and joke about it, and I don't know who said that, but I know someone said that. Our state is in trouble. When there's an R beside someone's name, and that person will automatically be elected no matter their qualifications, our state is in trouble. The proof is making the headlines with crazy North Carolina people, like Madison Cawthorn, charging up the crowds with threats of violence and bloodshed. Yes, words coming out of mouths are fueling hatred and nonsensical actions, which can lead to more radical elements, such as what took place on January the 6th, and I'm scared for my grandchildren. Where are the common sense voices? Where are the leaders who don't care if they are elected again, who will vote for the good of the people, not for the money they will receive from voting for special interests? The minority voters deserve a voice instead of being thrown into a district where their vote means nothing. We all deserve a fair shot at picking our...
Sorry about, yeah. Go ahead, if you will, wrap up your comments.
I will, I will. I'm a Rotarian, and I feel like some of you folks sitting up there right now are Rotarians too. And one of the things that we say at the end of our meetings is, is it fair to all concerned? And I want to leave that with you today. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm a fourth-generation Caldwell County citizen. I live in the Oak Hill community currently. I am a retired educator and currently work as a part-time librarian. On August 12th, the state legislature adopted district map-making rules for 2020. Following court losses in 2011, 2016, and 2019 because of racial and political gerrymandering, this time, they say, they will not use racial or political data to draw their maps. They will also attempt to follow county boundaries. This seems like a good start to drawing fair maps. However, there are details and vagaries in the rules that are troubling. The Raleigh News &amp; Observer cites some examples. The rules state that the addresses of current lawmakers may be considered in drawing the maps, a measure that would protect incumbents. Other rules state that municipal boundaries may be considered. Voting districts can be split only when necessary. Lawmakers should make reasonable efforts to draw districts compactly, and knowledge of communities may be considered. I am particularly concerned about the last one, that it will allow mapmakers to work around their own rule of not using political data. I am worried that this fuzzy language will enable the majority party to continue with the redistricting shenanigans for which they are notorious, and that our maps will not be much better than in the past. North Carolinians need to keep a very close eye on our legislators as they begin to redraw the district maps that we will live with for the next 10 years. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Carlos Lopez.
Good evening, everyone. Hope you're all doing well. Though I do not live in the Caldwell County area, I am from a rural town known as McDowell. I will use this platform to be able to address the needs of the county. My name is Carlos Lopez. Like I said, I'm representing Centro Unido Latinoamericano, also known as CULA, an all-inclusive organization, nonprofit, that is serving communities of color, underserved, and marginalized communities in the McDowell County area, Marion, North Carolina, a place I've called home for 16 years. And I am here today to encourage further transparency and public disclosure for redistricting in North Carolina. I am a youth coordinator at my organization, teaching young people in my community social skills, education, and the significance of being informed and engaged with the powers that be through collaborative activities and team building. McDowell's population currently sits at 46,427 people, and 22.3% of those people are under 19, the highest percentage, and the second being 19.9% for folks over 65. Throughout life, I've created bonds with all sorts of people with different backgrounds, occupations, and interests. And there's rarely been any division between my community, and I would like for that not to take place. My cultural knowledge helps me bring my community together, and we have Spanish-speaking students, students of color, and aspiring white young students as well, and we are all unified by the common goal of having a better future for everybody. But when young folks are asked why they are not engaged in civic engagement in McDowell, most common answer is that they feel undermined due to the age and "lack of experience." Now imagine how they will feel once they realize that the redistricting process where they live is not as transparent as they would expect it to be. I am their role model, advocating for recognition and involvement for younger audiences, so I ask that public disclosure for redistricting, or map redistricting, be reconsidered with the future generation in mind. Ask yourself, what will I leave for them? I thank you, and thank you for your time. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, sir. Margarita Ramirez.
My name is Margarita Ramirez. I am the Executive Director of Centro Unido Latinoamericano, a nonprofit organization that serves the Latinx community and more in McDowell. In 2011, you held 60 hearings, 60 hearings, and I think that the 100 counties needed to have a hearing. It makes it impossible for a lot of the community to drive and come to a hearing. Being part of the McDowell community for over 20 years, I have witnessed the systematic barriers and equality that exist for the community I serve. In Centro Unido Latinoamericano, we serve... In Centro Unido Latinoamericano, we serve between 800 to 1,200 people in a month. Those numbers shows that the percentage of the Latinx community in McDowell is much larger than what we think. Living in McDowell and from my own lived experience, I realized from a very young age that I had to serve as an interpreter to my community because the service was not available and is not available in many places. That is just one of the systemic barriers that I'm talking about. I don't want to talk to you only about what we need, but also about what my community contributes. My community not only vibrates in its culture and traditions, but above all, we stand out for our dedication and work ethic. An example is that the majority work in agriculture, greenhouses, and factories and restaurants. They are essential workers, and they do the work that nobody else wants to do. This is not just the history of McDowell County, but all of western North Carolina. Western North Carolina is overlooked, and the contributions of my community gets so overlooked. This is why I ask that we be fair in the division of district and that we focus on all communities receiving the necessary resources for all that happen, for that to happen. My community needs to have a fair representation. A better and most transparent hearing with a virtual option is much needed, not only for English-speaking, but for everyone. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Ed Blair.
I'm Ed Blair from Lenore. Gerrymandering has a long history. In the past, legislators with majority control, both Democrats and Republicans, have used gerrymandering, not to design voting districts aimed at hearing the voice of our people, but instead to keep themselves individually and as a political party in power, regardless of the will of the people. As it has been and continues to be used, gerrymandering violates the Equal Protection Clause of our Constitution, which mandates that all of our people enjoy equal protection of the law. The Constitution requires that votes of any voter or group of voters not be degraded for the political gain of any political party or politician. The insidious threat and corruption presented by gerrymandering has increased in recent years. Modern partisan legislators now have sophisticated tools, such as computer-generated mapping based on racial, ethnic, economic, age, and other group characteristics to use in crafting districts to their own political advantage. They minimize the impact of appropriate criteria, such as county and municipal boundary lines, in order to achieve their purely partisan goals. Reliance on such inappropriate group information and designing voting districts to discriminate against groups of voters is not only unlawful and contrary to our constitutions and the principles of democracy, it is also a manifestation of the bad character of any legislator who acts or votes to support such shameful purposes. I urge my fellow North Carolina citizens to pay attention to the way that members of our General Assembly, particularly their own representative or senator, how they act as they design our new voting districts. Consider whether or not their actions are done to promote democracy, or are they engaged in unlawful gerrymandering in order to accomplish personal or partisan political gain? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. T. Anthony Spolono. And I made it so much that last name, and I apologize.
Thank you, sir. Spearman is the name. To the lady and gentleman of the Redistricting Committee of the General Assembly, I am the Reverend Dr. T. Anthony Spearman, President of the North Carolina NAACP. And I represent thousands of members across the length and breadth of the state. So I will more than likely be shadowing you to meetings of these redistricting hearings. Redistricting is essential to voting rights and electoral representation for historically underrepresented groups. Fair, community-generated redistricting testimony and proposals can positively impact policy outcomes for African-Americans and provide an opportunity for underrepresented groups to fairly choose electoral representatives. As the Reverend Kim Moss has already said, the General Assembly failed to include the consideration of the history of discrimination in North Carolina, which is necessary to ensure compliance with Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act in its redistricting criteria. I strongly oppose the exclusion of the history of discrimination in the criteria and urge the General Assembly to expressly consider the history of discrimination in voting and redistricting so it does not again violate Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act. Further, the criteria provides minimal consideration of communities of interest. Communities of interest are communities that have a shared interest or passion and may benefit from cohesive representation in the legislature. Redistricting should focus on communities, not politicians and incumbents. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Chuck Gore.
Thank you very much. Native North Carolinian, resident of Caldwell for 14 years, to be rather than to seem. I'm going to speak of my own experience in that of helplessness. A lot of times, I don't feel that I have representation within my district. And without going into a lot of the reasons for it, where it really concerns me, if I feel that way, then there are many others. Whatever process you use to redistrict, make sure that all are represented. Give someone a fair chance. Let a person win on their merits, not on the folks that, well, I just don't want to participate. North Carolina deserves an informed and an engaged electorate. The number of people I run into who can't tell me who their U.S. Congressman is, who can't tell me who their state representative or their state senator is, that needs to change. It needs to change for the good of our state, not just so our needs can be met and our concerns be, have a voice, but also to hold those accountable. I mean, we've seen through the toxic political climate. The lady was speaking about Madison Cawthorn. If we don't have a way, and the vote is the way to do it, the vote is the way, the proper way to do it, to hold people accountable. And there've been some, there've been seven, that have engaged in what I consider seditious activity. Voting is the democratic way of doing it. And it only works when everyone has that fair shot. So I implore you all to make it as fair as possible, and thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. So we have reached the end of all those who have signed up. However, the chair does want to give an opportunity in case anyone came in who had signed up to be able to speak. So is there anyone in the audience who signed up, whether online or here in person tonight, who did not hear their name called out? If you signed up and did not hear your name called out, please raise your hand or come towards the front. Seeing no one, was there anyone who showed up and was not able to find the sign-in sheet to be able to sign up, who would like to sign up? If so, just simply raise your hand, and we'll direct the sergeant in arms to you. Seeing none, the chair again wants to thank all the members of the public who came out tonight. The members of the General Assembly again speaking for the members who are here. We really value the time that you all have taken. We've got members here tonight, really from all over the state, who have taken their time to come right here to Caldwell County to be able to listen to what folks in this area and this region have to say on this matter. And again, there will be additional public comment periods across the state. I would encourage you to go on the North Carolina General Assembly's website. There's a special page there for redistricting. You can get a lot of information on that page, including committee meeting notices, where you can listen or watch online to committee meetings. There are lists of the various areas where public hearings are to be held. There will be at some point in the future, when the body does begin drawing those maps, which of course has not happened yet, that, all of that will be online for the public to go and for the public to view. So with that being said, we will now adjourn the meeting.